Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 27th, 2024. If you would please stand for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
We just thank you for a beautiful day in Berry County. We ask for your guidance over this board as we debate things like the Mid-Villa. We celebrate the 30 years of Michael Brown. We just ask that you continue to keep Michael and his family in all of our prayers and blessings as his career moves forward. We just thank you for this board. We thank you for the continuity. We thank you for all of the blessings that you bestowed upon Berry County and all those who live in it, continue to guide us and help us and lead us to make the right decisions to have the best impact on the people we represent. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
President.
Carlton.
President.
Getty.
Here.
Smoker.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Tunisen.
Here.
Jackson.
Here. Thank you. Reports from state and county officials. Are there any state or county officials here this morning that would like to address the board?
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to let you know that the Consumers Project was submitted and will be on the September agenda, so we're going to get all that around. Secondly, response to last week's, some of the comments that were made, we did send a memorandum to the townships and the villages regarding the enforcement officer attending meetings. We will be starting that later in the fall, and in fact, we have scheduled our first one for October. I'd like to thank Michael Brown for his years of consistent leadership and service. Congratulations on your retirement and good luck with all your future endeavors. And finally, I'm here to support the Mid-Villa Project. When those projects are presented to you, they are processed through the Brownfield Authority. That Brownfield Authority consists of myself, Jennifer Heinzman, Doug Powers, Dan King, Chelsea Foster, Dave, Cindy Vujia. They are vetted. We are the four people that are entrusted with community development for your county, and we recommend this unanimously to you, so we hope you support that project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Julie.
The comment, Your Honor, comes from habit.
I'll take the raise.
Good morning. My name is Julie Nakfor-Pratt, and I'm the prosecuting attorney here in Berry County. And I would first like to say congratulations to Michael Brown. And I want Michael to know that I appreciate, really, from the bottom of my heart, how professional and helpful Michael has been to me and my office over the years. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate that. You have been a very, very good team player and a very good friend, and luckily, the friendships continue, and I wish you the very best in your next chapter. Well, today I'm here to talk about a situation that occurred in early August. It's regarding a FOIA request, and I'm going to get into that. I'm going to read a memo. It's a little bit lengthy, but I promise it won't go on for hours. But I think it's important to read it in its entirety. I've given each of the commissioners a copy. I've given the clerk a copy and the administrator a copy, so that you can have the written form. But I first want to say something as sort of a caveat, because I've been asked this so much since August 5th. I'm going to talk about some documents that were dispersed in early August. I want everybody to know, I am not criminally investigating this. This is not going to be a statement about the criminal process. This is not a statement about me investigating anything. Prosecutors don't investigate. Police officers do. I say that because I'm not accusing anybody of a crime. I am not here to talk about that. It works like this. A citizen files a complaint with a police agency if they think something has happened that's criminal. The police agency does a full investigation, and they can either clear someone without submitting it to my office, or they can submit it to my office and have me decide if charges are warranted. The Attorney General can do the same. My understanding is that the Attorney General has received some complaints in this case, and I'm going to let them do their job. I'm not, I just want people to know that today's purpose is not about a civil suit either. That is not my job. That is not my role. Today, I am focusing on our FOIA process. I'm focusing on some things that happened that I'm very concerned about, and I want the county, to work with the county, to see if we can work together to improve a situation. So, I am going to read this. I am writing to, this is to the County Board of Commissioners from me. I am writing to express concern about documents that were distributed to the public by Sheriff Leef without following the FOIA procedure. Although it is not required that different departments agree on whether information is exempt under the Freedom of Information or FOIA statute, coordination is critical to protect the citizens of our county and the integrity of our documents. I am also concerned that Sheriff Leef seems to operate by his own set of rules, which can have serious consequences for the county if not addressed. The situation I'm addressing today relates to handwritten notes authored by undersheriff Jason Sixberry as it relates to an alleged conflict between Sergeant Rochelle Spencer, an employee of the Berry County Sheriff's Office, and two other individuals. I believe the alleged conflict transpired in early 2023. In addition, it should be noted that Sergeant Spencer was one of the candidates running against the sheriff in the August 6, 2024 primary election. On July 15, 2024, I received a FOIA request from a citizen, Larry Osborne. The request came through the Berry County FOIA Coordinator. I've used an acronym, but I'm just going to say Berry County FOIA Coordinator. This document came to both Sheriff Leef and myself. Mr. Osborne requested items related to Sergeant Rochelle Spencer as referenced above. On July 23rd, I received an email from the coordinator forwarding two additional FOIA requests from Eldon Schellenbarger and Aaron Gross, also asking for items related to Sergeant Rochelle Spencer. Aaron Gross's FOIA request also included a request for a copy of Eldon Schellenbarger's FOIA request and anything he received from it. I had in my possession Jason Sixberry's notes, which were forwarded to me by Sheriff Leef. I determined that the notes were exempt under the FOIA statute. After legal analysis and consultation with one of the county attorneys, I denied the FOIA request on August 5, 2024. On August 4, a Sunday, I was informed that two citizens, Charles Hertzler and Eldon Schellenbarger, had posted Sixberry's notes on a public Facebook page. I was sent screenshots of the post and became immediately concerned and a bit angry at the lack of care and consideration for the privacy of the individuals referenced in the notes. I was also shocked at the disrespect of our criminal justice process, the integrity of which most of us in law enforcement work hard to maintain. Questions that came to my mind were, who gave out these notes that were private, incomplete, and most importantly, unredacted except for a phone number? Were they distributed through the FOIA process? Did the individuals referenced in the notes know they were about to be thrown into the spotlight? Why did only some of the requesters receive the documents and not all of them? I decided to look into this for two reasons: to protect the privacy of our citizens and to ensure that in the future, the sheriff abides by the same set of rules that the rest of the public officials in Berry County follow. In order to better understand my concerns, some history may be helpful. Most of the information below occurred in 2024 unless otherwise indicated. On June 18, Larry Osborne sent a FOIA request to the FOIA coordinator requesting documents that were related to the conflict between three individuals, including Sergeant Spencer, that are the subject of Jason Sixberry's notes. On June 19, Osborne's request was granted, and he received only a copy of a letter regarding Don Wilgus' resignation as treasurer for Spencer's campaign. On June 22, Larry Osborne emailed the coordinator asking if the document he received was the only one available, adding that he thought there would be more documents. Very important. On June 24, the coordinator responded that the sheriff's office told them, quote, "They do not have any documents at this time." On July 1, I received a copy of Jason Six, on July 1, I received a copy of Jason Sixberry's handwritten notes from Sheriff Leef. Sheriff Leef wanted me to ask for a police investigation regarding some allegations in the notes, but I declined. As I stated before, prosecutors do not request investigations. Rather, we review cases for charges after an investigation is complete. I should add quickly that if a citizen calls my office because they think we take complaints, we do redirect them to the police. In this case, no one has filed a criminal complaint with the police agency, and therefore, there was not a criminal investigation that was forwarded to my office. Between early June and mid-July, I had at least two conversations with Sheriff Leef about a potential internal investigation regarding Sergeant Spencer. He acknowledged that he had Jason Sixberry reach out to some of the individuals in the notes. On July 24, I met with one of our county attorneys to discuss the FOIA requests with him. I continued my legal research in drafting my FOIA response. On August 1, I spoke to the FOIA coordinator to inquire whether the sheriff had responded to the FOIA request. I was told that he stated there were no other documents. I advised the coordinator that he did in fact have other documents related to Rochelle Spencer. Excuse me. Excuse me. I advised the coordinator that he did in fact have other documents related to the matter because he had sent them to me. Later that day, I also expressed my concern about the sheriff's representation that there were no other documents related to Rochelle Spencer to the county administrator. How could the sheriff send them to me back in early July if he didn't have them? He certainly did not send me the original. I did not speak to Sheriff Leef about this because frankly, I was frustrated. I am not responsible for his decisions, nor am I responsible for his statements to the county coordinator. I wanted to make sure that I completed my paperwork properly. The fact that we both had possession of the documents does not negate or excuse his obligation under the FOIA statute. Later, I wondered whether there was a specific reason that he would say there were none and give them out the way he did. On August 1, I reached out to all three of the FOIA requesters to let them know I would be delayed in my response and that I was completing legal research. It should be noted that I had direct contact with Aaron Gross and Larry Osborne, but could only leave Eldon Schellenbarger a voicemail. Please note, any notion created by Mr. Schellenbarger that I told him to pick the documents up that the sheriff's office is untrue. On or about August 3, Eldon Schellenbarger received notes from Sheriff Leef. On or about August 3 or 4, Joel Ibbotin, who did not file a FOIA request, received the documents from Sheriff Leef. On Sunday, August 4, I began receiving word that Schellenbarger and Charles Hertzler posted the notes on public social media site. On August 5, I sent an email to the sheriff, asking him to clarify that he did give the notes to Eldon Schellenbarger and whether it was pursuant to a FOIA request. As of this date, I have not received a response from Sheriff Leef. On August 5, I sent my FOIA denials first to the coordinator and then to all three FOIA requesters. I also left a voicemail for Eldon Schellenbarger, letting him know we would send his through the mail as we did not have an email address. Although the documents had been splashed all over social media, I still denied the request as it was the right thing to do legally and ethically, and I stand by it. I learned that Sheriff Leef also consulted one of the county attorneys about his distribution of Sixberry's notes. I spoke to that attorney, and he clarified that Sheriff Leef contacted him only after he gave out the notes, not before. Since that time, I see that Sheriff Leef told the media that he distributed the documents because, quote, "The public had a right to know." To that, I can only ask: The public had a right to know what? That individuals said something about one of his deputies? Did he ever give the deputy an opportunity to answer to the allegations? I learned that he did not. Are the notes even public record? Police notes are not easily distributed, even in criminal cases, much less a FOIA situation. Why did Larry Osborne, the first person to file a FOIA request, never receive them? Was there any reason or motive to give them to specific people? I want to know. I don't deny FOIA requests lightly. I go through an analysis that I know may have to be defended later in a court of law. In this case, I considered many facts. First, the last time I spoke to Sheriff Leef, he spoke of an internal investigation. Therefore, it is important to consider whether the notes are investigative records compiled for law enforcement purposes. If so, I will try, if so, will they interfere with law enforcement proceedings such as an internal investigation? They certainly can. It is critical that the integrity of an investigation be protected and that law enforcement is afforded the best opportunity to fully investigate a matter as best they can without the spoil of outside influence or bullying. I also considered whether distribution of the notes would constitute an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy. The document is a four-page handwritten set of notes that appear to be incomplete. The notes are statements made by individuals about Sergeant Spencer. Because I know that police officers are fact finders, I assume there would be further investigation to obtain all available information before completing the notes on a report, and I am not knocking Jason Sixberry. He was placed on leave, and so I assumed it was incomplete. Because I know that police officers are fact, excuse me, I learned that Sergeant Spencer had not been asked whether she wanted to make a statement about the information in the notes. Therefore, I considered the matter private until it was deemed otherwise. So, I will ask again: What did the public really have a right to know? That there's a potential conflict between three people back in 2023? Were the three individuals that were about to be affected asked in advance how they felt about having their names flung out into the public as if they were inconsequential? And for what? There was nothing in the documents, nor in the information given to me, that was anything but personal and private. Sheriff Leef not only caused a lot of anguish to Sergeant Spencer and her family, I am confident that the other individuals suffered as well. These are damaging consequences, these are the damaging consequences that I spoke of earlier that can produce collateral consequences for the county. I have always supported the men and women at the sheriff's office who have worked hard to protect and serve this community. I will continue to hand them kudos for their good work and continue to advise and guide them when needed. As leaders and public officials, we are given great responsibility to our community, but also to our employees who should be able to rely on us to be fair and just. I do not see the fairness in giving out notes to the public that only reflect a partial set of facts that are embarrassing, surprising, and hurtful to all three individuals. If that is not an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy, I do not know what is. I can only imagine the feeling of insecurity it must give to the rest of employees at the sheriff's department. For those in the public that jumped on the, quote, "Public had the right to know" bandwagon, I have to believe that they would not appreciate it if it happened to them. I have long since had concerns with how Sheriff, how Sheriff Leef has handled the FOIA process. I have had to fulfill FOIA requests for some that were told that the case was, quote, "under investigation" when our office had deemed it closed. It is not enough to use the term "under investigation." We are required to explain why the status of "under investigation" matters. In another example, the county was sued, this county was sued by the sheriff because he claims my office and the county clerk, who's now retired, refused to fulfill a FOIA request for our emails, when in truth, we were trying to clarify what he was requesting because the FOIA was poorly written. A simple phone call or meeting would have spared time, resources, and money to this county. I am reaching out to you as our county leaders in hopes of working together to ensure that the public is protected, that we are transparent when appropriate, and that the FOIA statute is followed by all public officials in this county. Berry County has a coordinator for a good reason, which is to be consistent and keep track of information being distributed to the public. Before I end, I just had one more comment that I wanted to make, and this is, this is more of a personal opinion. When the, when this whole situation first happened, a reporter asked me what bothers me most about this, and this is what has nagged at me from the very beginning and what nags at me to this day, and I want to know. The sheriff has always considered himself the chief law enforcement officer in this county. Throwing his own employee and two others under the bus for reasons that he knows and I can guess, without gathering all available facts, is not what an honorable chief law enforcement officer would do. His employees and our community deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Are there, are there questions from commissioners for Julie?
Questions from commissioners, going once. I appreciate the information, Julie. I know we've all got a lot of questions about that.
I would be happy to return.
There's been several accusations saying the board is complicit. There's been several people talking about it, and, and we haven't had all the facts that you've obviously had access to, so I appreciate that very thorough report and the information. I agree with you that we need to get some coordination to be sure that the efforts are being done properly in there, which obviously, in this case, they weren't. And as elected officials, we are held to a higher standard, and from what we're reading, this is very disappointing as well, so.
I, on that note, I would say this. We, I too have been asked, well, what is your county going to do, or what can you do when somebody doesn't follow FOIA? To that, I would say this. I am not going to use the next four years of my public service that I worked so hard for in this county to go by a second set of rules, and I'm not saying that against the county or anybody or their coordinator. I'm saying that against the sheriff. I'm not going to abide by a second set of rules that somebody else abides by their other set. I don't have all the answers to what the, to what the solution is, except I can only do what I do, and that is, I am going to be calling these out. I'm not going to stand for it. I'm not going to abide by that in the future. I have four more years, and I want to use them wisely, and I want to use them to serve this county. And so, I, I know what I can do, and I'm willing to be a part of a solution. If the county would like to have some meetings about it, I would definitely like to be part of the solution.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Are there other state or county officials that would like to comment this morning or address the board? Hearing none. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
All right. Rich Tenkey, Executive Director of Berry County Communal Health. I'm just looking around. I don't see, oh, Liz is here, so I'll let you do your thing then. You got a seat. You got here early. All right. So, I won't, I won't discuss this, but, so, I've been here before, and we've talked about CIT team that we've been in the process for, it's been a couple of years to get this underway, Community Intervention Team. So, that's a team that involves mental health and law enforcement working closer together. And so, we're to the point where that, we have a finalized manual, and so, I just wanted to come here and let you guys know that because there's been a couple of you guys that have, and ladies that have asked about that and supported that. And so, that'll be presented at the, help me out, the, Julie, Chiefs meeting, thank you. That'll be presented at the Chiefs meeting, kind of as an informational situation, and then we'll, we'll go forward with getting signatures on that. So, pretty excited about that, as that'll bring about a better collaboration throughout the county, so.
Okay. Rich, will you give us a quick explanation of CIT for people in the audience who don't know what that is?
Yeah, for sure. So, CIT started years ago, and it's often referred to as the Memphis Model.
What does CIT stand for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Community Intervention Team. And so, that is, in bigger cities, they'll have social workers, psychologists or MSW social workers, right along with police officers. And so, they'll go on calls together. And so, the ideal is, if it's better to have behavioral health involvement, then let's do that instead of, you know, police involvement. If it's better to have both, let's have both. So, in Berry County, we don't have law enforcement, nor behavioral health has the volume where we're doing ride-alongs. So, our model is a little bit different. It fits Berry County, you know, so when those calls come in to dispatch, you know, kind of deciphering, is this, is this behavioral health? Is this, you know, law enforcement? Quite often, it's law enforcement, and then we're coming out kind of, you know, in conjunction with them or behind them after they've made sure that the scene is clear and safe for us, so.
Awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, thank you.
Additional public comment?
Hi. I was here last week. First off, I'd like to mention that getting the Freedom of Information Act FOIA is done to the courthouse here is next to impossible. I've been trying. I've sent numerous ones. The only way I could even get an answer is if I made them a date, the time and date that I put my last ones in. Then they answered my questions because I told them I needed proof of service. But last time I was here-
Would you give us your name and township?
Tim Wymer.
Tim Wymer, okay.
That's right. Okay, right here, since January, this is how many pictures have been taken of my property from planting and zoning. I got one here. I'd like to show you. The first one is a planting and zoning's copy. Here's another one you can send up to, or a couple more. If you look at these pictures, they're so dark, and he claims it's blight in my yard, but if you look at the pictures he's sending in, he's got them darkened out so bad, you can't even tell what's in them. The one there, you can see, that one that Mr. Hatfield had is one I took to show what's actually there. But if you look at the other ones, you can't see the jet skis of the same picture there or tell what anything is, because like I said, and I got a stack of them here. I only got colored pictures after I went to court and the one magistrate went in between our hearings and told them to bring colored pictures now instead of black and white, so they darkened out, okay? He intentionally darkened those out. You can do that with any phone or camera to make it look worse, okay? That's the kind of stuff that we've been dealing with, not to mention a corrupt judge and corrupt prosecuting attorney. Now, this guy drives by my house every Thursday, it seems like. I drove by his house once, and our fine prosecuting attorney told me if I drove by his house and took pictures again, I was going to get arrested for stalking. Who's going to arrest him for stalking me? Don't you think that's a little bit excessive? Every week, he drives by my house to take pictures. Like I said, there's a stack of them. I think it's a little bit ridiculous. And as far as Mrs. Nakfor-Pratt over there, she does operate by two different sets of rules. The ones that she wants is the main one, okay? And it's called transparency, when Darrell Leef puts stuff out like that. Everybody in this county has a right to know what's going on in the sheriff's department, in the prosecuting attorney's office, in this office or this hearing, everybody. It's our, our county.
Thank you.
And those are original pictures. I didn't copy any of them because I want them to be seen the way they were presented to the court. And unfortunately, our court-
Your term has expired. Thank you. Additional public comment? Yes?
Commissioners, my name is Kevin Smith. I'm president pro tem of the village of Midville. I'm here to voice my strong support for the Mid-Villa Housing Development, which has received support and approval- received support and approval from both Village Council and Middleville DDA. This isn't just another housing project, it's a vital step forward for our community, offering much-needed affordable housing at a time when most new homes going into Middleville are north of $380,000 each. Mr. Hybor of Dutch Developers has shown extraordinary dedication, attending numerous meetings with a commitment to transparency and education. His focus has always been on delivering not just affordable housing, but the right kind of affordable housing that meets the village specifications and needs. I'm going to shake up here a little bit. This project makes smart use of tax increment financing, of a tax increment financing option through Michigan's Brownfield Development Program, which is specifically designed to develop vacant land for affordable housing. This is critical for our village, our state, and our county, where there is a severe shortage of both workers and the workforce housing that they need. The future tax revenue from this project, along with additional developments planned by the same developer, will more than offset any deferred revenue from the TIF. This growth in both residential and commercial sectors will be a significant boost to our community's finances, helping Middleville grow sustainably and equitably. This development isn't just beneficial for Middleville, it's essential. It will provide quality, well-managed, affordable housing for the hard-working Americans who are the backbone of our country: teachers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, machinists, administrative workers, construction workers, and more. Please consider voting in favor of this exceptional opportunity to meet a critical need in the Village of Middleville. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Good morning. Liz Lenz, Berry County Mental Health and Substance Abuse Task Force. First of all, let me say, Michael, when I grow up, I want to be just like you. We all have been... I want to just say thank you for your grace and your dignity and your ability to juggle without any of us knowing you were juggling. You have my heartfelt respect, and this is a... Berry County is a wonderful ship, and they say when you get a boat, it's the best day of your life, and when you sell a boat, it's the best day of your life. And, you know, you've had 30 years with this boat, and you have sailed it beautifully. And thank you. I've been here for almost 35 years, and I don't get to leave yet, and that's really sad. Anyway, enough about that. So, big news. In Berry County, next week, we're going to be visited by a research team from Michigan State University. Dr. Barnes Nager and her team will be here in the community, and I put a folder with some flyers on our chairs on your desk. If you can share those. We've set up opportunities for listening sessions and one-on-one interviews with people to share their story about the opioid crisis and substance use and how it has... How people have suffered. And ultimately, we are going to be talking about... Well, I'm not doing it, but Dr. Barnes Nager and her team are asking questions of people with lived experience or people who have been in the trenches, so to speak, what they'd like to see happen with these opioid settlement dollars. And so, we're excited for that to launch next week, and we thank you again. The Substance Abuse Task Force thanks you for your support. We appreciate all the partners that have made this happen, and I just want to say thank you again. We'll continue to come back and report.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Additional public comment?
Hi, Chad Van Sekel, Baltimore Township Supervisor. How are you guys today? I'm here about the planning and zoning. Again, I just think a letter after 10 months is a little ridiculous coming from the planning and zoning. We need answers, not a letter. A letter 10 months ago, 11 months ago, when this all started and they hired somebody, I could get that, but after we've had so many problems, I don't think so. I just want to know who's going to answer for this stuff. I mean, I went to the planning and zoning appeals meeting last night, and it's just ridiculous. These people pay for taxes, they pay for the property to start with. To an extent, they ought to be able to do what they want on it. That's my heartfelt opinion, they shouldn't be harassed. The zoning officer we've got now will trip over 10 places, drive right by them to pick on some people. It's not right. Like I said, I just want to know who he answers to because he doesn't want to answer to us or even have any kind of discussions. When we talk about this master plan, you can follow the money where the master plan's at. We've got all these digesters going in in Johnstown Township and all these solar panels. It's just ridiculous. The people didn't want this. Whose idea was it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Eldon Scholmberger, Hastings. Michael, I'd like to say it was a pleasure working with you when we were working on the Berry County Advisory Board. It was a real pleasure working with you, and then you worked with Sue Van De Car and us getting things put together for the animal shelter, and I'm really pleased at how well that turned out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Like. I'm the Economic Development Director for the Berry County Chamber and EDA, and I am here to speak in favor of the Mid-Villa Project. One of the things that we do at our office consistently is working with businesses and industries to help them with their growth within the county, and the number-one hurdle to business growth right now is the lack of housing for employees. So when we talk about this project in particular and that it is workforce housing, a lot of people don't even know, like, what is workforce housing? Workforce housing is housing that is for individuals that make between 80% and 120% of the average median income in their household. What does that mean for the Village of Middleville? Those are household incomes of $40,000 to $90,000 a year. These are the production workers at Bradford White and H&amp;L Manufacturing. These are the teachers and administrators at the school. By the way, manufacturing and school administration, two largest employers in Berry... in the Village of Middleville right now. So this housing is incredibly important for them when it comes to talent attraction and things like that. The other thing to consider with this type of housing is it creates opportunity for young families that don't have the resources to buy a $380,000 house, but that need a place to stay and they don't want to move out of the county. When we talk about keeping our youth and keeping our talent here, we can only do that if there is someplace for them to live. So this project would create 144 workforce housing units. The growth in the Village of Middleville and the county is expected to increase significantly over the next 10 years, with 20% of that growth is anticipated to take place in the village directly, and that equates to a demand for about 880 units over the next 10 years. So this is a big step in the right direction towards addressing that need that is just going to continue to grow and grow and grow over the next 10 years, especially as we face that downward push from growth from Kent County and Grand Rapids. So I just wanted to come in support of that program and this project. I think it's going to be an incredible benefit for the village. It's a multifaceted project. It's not just dense housing. There's also going to be commercial aspects for it that are completely separate from what they're asking for today. And if anybody has any questions, I will happily come back up during their presentation to address any concerns that anybody has. And then with my last 20 seconds, Michael, congratulations on your retirement. You are somewhat of a legend in the local West Michigan Regional Planning Commission. I think it was you and Paul Ballack that had served the longest, and he retired like two months before you, so you just edged him out there. So congratulations, and that's all for me.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Well, they say timing's everything, so I'm Craig McCarthy. I'm the Superintendent of Thornapple Kellogg Schools. I just want to echo what was just said about affordable housing. Each year, we hire between 15 and 20 new employees, and they have difficulty finding affordable housing in the Middleville area. I have teachers that are driving all the way to Northwest Grand Rapids or Northeast Grand Rapids to be able to find an apartment that they can afford to be able to work in Middleville. We have fantastic employees, and they give their heart and soul to the children. I'm just here, it's not my place to tell you whether or not to accept the tax increment funding. I've dealt with that in the past, but I know that having housing for... affordable housing for our employees is one of the key things that's going to keep Middleville a viable community. So I'm in favor of this, and I just wanted to add on to that our last speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Doug Powers, Planning and Zoning Administrator for the Village of Middleville. I'm here in regard to the county commissioners. About six weeks ago, there was various comments, questions, and concerns addressed pertaining to matters of density and setbacks really related to zoning. The Village of Middleville does its own zoning. The Village Council and Planning Commission have been working with the developer on this project for approximately four years. I am at my office. If there are ever any comments, questions, or concerns about negative implications about planning or zoning matters that pertain to the Village of Middleville. Beyond that, you know, I'm not sure, because I never got any comments, questions, or concerns, you know, addressed to my office over the past six weeks, but the thing I will say is I would thank Commissioner Getty for addressing the Thornberry Apartments. They do have the option to potentially add an additional unit, but just from a general perspective, if you're concerned, the Mid-Villa Project actually has less density per acre than Thornberry currently does. But I'm here if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Additional public comment?
Michael Brown. Michael Brown, you've been a great friend, a great administrator. Thank you for your longevity and dedication to this county. I appreciated the role model that you were when I was a commissioner and still are, and how you helped all of us, no matter what we asked, no matter how many times we asked it. Your door was always open, and I just want to say you'll be missed, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
lived in Middleville 25 years. I'm Berry County Home Life. Yeah, I'm on the Village Council, but I'm here as a Middleville resident. We have... One of the county's biggest employers is in our town. There's... If you've toured that factory in the last couple of years, which I have, as well as their training center, there's a great opportunity for people to come right there who can be trained in skilled trades and make a good living. They need a place to start. They need affordable housing to live in while that's going on. I think it's all been said. Myself, as a council member, my dining room table was filled with pros and cons sheets before the vote. I'm a taxpayer too, and I just want you to consider the needs of our community as a resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hi, everyone. I am Jennifer Heisman, CEO of the Berry County Chamber Economic Development Alliance. First, Michael, thank you so much for everything. I know I've created a lot of extra work for you over the years, and welcome aboard. Eric, you'll see what I mean. I am here in support of the Mid-Villa TIF plan, and I've been up here several times over the past few years talking about housing and the lack thereof, so you all know that I'm very much in support of this project. But today, I'm here to talk about the demand for these types of projects. We have communities all over Michigan that are begging for these types of projects to come into their communities, and I know I've seen on Nate's phone where there's actually communities texting him while I'm standing with him, like, forget about Berry County, just come to us then, and please don't do that. But I just want to say that all of the hoops that Nate and his team have jumped through to get to this point today, I... Thank you for staying around and sticking with us to get to this point, and I know as far as you all are concerned, this is a huge decision, and this kind of decision carries a lot of weight, but I think that the benefits of this project are going to be so much more impactful than any perceived loss that we may see over the next 15 years. So with that, I do hope that you will consider approving this TIF today, and like Kevin said, these are our firefighters and our teachers and the people that make our community what it is that need this place to get started. So I'm not going to repeat all the things that everybody said. I have pages of notes, and I have Nicole that does all of my thinking for me, so she's already said all of that this morning, but please, I just implore you to please approve this TIF program so that we can keep going with the work that we've been working on for the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
My name's Richard Hamilton. I'm a trustee and a member of Middleville Council. I also serve on the Planning Commission, the Site Planning Commission. I'm here to speak in favor of the Mid-Villa Project. I lived in Middleville for 54 years, before that from Nashville, so I've been Berry County resident and property owner for a number of years. I want to see this happen. I'm a grandfather, a great-grandfather. I see some of you are. You have children that'll benefit from this, or other residents will benefit from this. I can't re... I don't want to repeat everything else because everybody's hit the nail on the head. I want to thank Mr. Brown over here. I don't know you, but I've been retired for 25 years, and you're going to have a lot of fun.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hi, Vicky Beatty, Irving Township. I guess I'm going to be the only person against the Mid-Villa Project. I, as a 19-year-old woman, figured out my own way to subsidize housing when I wasn't making much money. I relived with five other women in a house with one bathroom, and we all had to be to work at the same time. I had three jobs, one full-time and two part-time. I subsidized my own life. Why do our taxpayers have to keep coming up with the money? Because what is government subsidized housing? The person that rents the property pays their rent, and then their owner of the property is then subsidized to the market value. What are they losing? Why do we have to pick the bill up for them? And I would also like to say that I talked to a young woman who wanted to get into subsidized housing here in Middleville, a new complex, or here in Hastings. She made $20,000 a year. Her rent was going to be $1,000 a month, and she's like, "I can't afford that. That is not my definition of low-income housing." She could not afford it.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Kurt DeCam, Thornapple Township. I'm back again. Vicky, you're not the only one. I figured it out, too. According to the numbers that were laid out, I qualify for this housing. I could rent out my house, double my income. What are we going to tell the people who own the apartments in the houses in Thornapple Township in Middleville already? Hey, a new guy's in town, we're going to hand out $4.5 million to him, and you're going to rent out your apartments for about the same cost as Thornberry and some of the other ones. He's right across the street from another apartment complex that, as far as I know, didn't receive any of my tax dollars to start their project. What do we tell a Vicky who's been here forever, worked three jobs, made it happen? Find me a government program where we subsidize their income. There's no reward for any of these renters. There's no incentive to do better, not like a Vicky who went and took three jobs to make it happen to own her own home. We are going to socialize the risk of one developer to privatize his profit. I don't want that in my township or in my village.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Going once.
Hi, Nate Hybor. I am the developer of Mid-Villa. A couple of things I just want to bring up that were brought today. This is not a low-income product. This is not going to... This is not going to solve all the issues of housing, but this is a workforce housing. This is supposed to help what the state calls the missing middle, the people that have more than one income that would like to stay in the village. This is a state program that we can use, that the county, the village, there is a process for the BRA to apply to the state. That is all that's at a vote today is that is the BRA allowed to submit the application? 4.6 million is a lot of dollars, is a lot of money, but we also have to remember that the state has a check ready to write us back for the schools. That is 1.7 million. That's a lot of money coming back. We've asked for, why is the ask so large? Why can't it be less? It is less. The state has put this program out for us to use and that is all that's at vote today is to pass it along to your BRA who's already unanimously recommended it, push it along to the state. So it's not going to solve all the problems. Workforce housing, it is for the middle. It is those incomes, the Vickys of the world, people in that situation, it's not a low-income. There are low-income products in Hastings and elsewhere. That is not what this is. This is a new brownfield product. It's 144 units. It's not going to solve the 800. It's not going to solve some people that are maybe struggling at the low-income level. This is a very specific help with, with the middle. That is what this project is. I'm here for any other questions that come up. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
My name is David Lonsma. I'm a precinct delegate from Yankee Springs Township. I'd like to address the Mid-Villa Brownfield TIF issue. During the primary campaign season, I knocked on a lot of doors around Middleville. The question regarding the Mid-Villa project came up quite often. What I quickly discovered was that there was a serious lack of understanding of how this project would work, who it would serve and how it would affect Middleville. As a precinct delegate, I had attended many village, township and DDA meetings. I had asked my own questions regarding these impacts on Middleville and had received answers and information in response. First, it is important to acknowledge that there is a lack of housing in our area, specifically affordable housing. This need has been listed in the county's plan as well as the village's plan. It is cited as a top priority. Dutch developers purchased the property and presented a plan to address this housing need. This project addresses middle-income housing. To do this, it is required that the rent charge falls within that 80 to 100% of the area median income. This is determined by study of the Middleville area. Workforce housing is not low-income housing. This housing rent meets the housing expenditure limits for middle-income earners. To build an apartment complex that both meets this rent level and is also an appealing project requires that the developer get some of his tax payment back for this specified period of time. To have a good project at the end requires that a good project be built at the beginning. The taxable value at the end of the TIF period will exceed the taxable value if it is only developed commercially. It is not right to pejoratively label this as subsidized housing in order to disparage the product or the project. In one form or another, there's a lot of subsidized housing in our area. That is a reality of developing more middle-income housing. It is a means to help families get into a house. It is also disingenuous to suggest that this is too much development when we all know that 14 or 15 years from now, there will be all of this and more. Building up instead of out actually makes sense. Gobbling up another 80 to 120 acres of farmland to build another 200 homes is not sustainable while trying to limit the loss of our rural character. We are quickly giving up the very thing that endears us to our community. I have taken the time to go look at another Dutch developers' project called Black River Flats located in the south area of Holland. They are well-built, appealing units suggesting that the developer will not bring that same pride to this project is without basis. It is time to be honest. The local entities that are primarily responsible and affected have already given this the okay. Do the right thing, give approval for the adoption of resolution number 2418. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Okay, we are going to move ahead with our agenda. Approval of written agenda. At this time, any member of the board may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such request. Does any commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request, the agenda is approved as written. Various correspondence. Does any commissioner have correspondence they would like to share with the board? I'm assuming that if you read your email this morning, Mike Bremer wrote an email that came across. I believe that was in opposition to the Mid-Villa Flats project, so hopefully you got a chance to read that. And if you look at this beautiful poster in front of us, this came from Michigan Association of Counties, just saying it is our pleasure to present you and your county with a framed copy of the Seals of Michigan Counties poster. This poster was created as part of MAC's 125th anniversary celebration. We hope you and your colleagues agree to display this document in a prominent location in your meeting chambers or elsewhere in your facilities. Your county stalwart supportive MAC and its work, MAC and its work is appreciated. Thank you for your ongoing service to your county and your state. So beautiful poster highlighting all the counties in the state of Michigan. So take a look at that and we will find a place to display this at some point in the future. Consent agenda, Commissioner Smelker.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of August 13th, 2024 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes. Approval of the 2024 L4029 tax rate request for the levy of winter property taxes to be signed by the chairperson. Approval of the 2024-2025 childcare fund plan and budget and authorize the chair to sign it. Approval to authorize the board chair and county administrator to sign and process all necessary forms to complete the acceptance of the Neil P. Ryder Estate Trust for the Berry County Animal Shelter and do all portions to go into the animal shelter donation fund. And approval of Budget Amendment 24-B.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Colton. For all items listed on the consent agenda, discussion is not allowed and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Next on our agenda, we have no additional presentations. We have a public hearing today for the CDBG Emergency Repair Program Income. I know Marilyn was hiding in here someplace, so at this time, I will open the public hearing for the CDBG Emergency Repair Program Income. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the program or opposition to it? This is a program that provides funds for some of the poorest in our community to help rehab houses. It's a grant for about $200,000 for this year. Again, anybody wish to speak in favor or opposition to the CBDG Emergency Repair Program Income Grant? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Next on our agenda, items for consideration, Commissioner Hatfield.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of claims in the amount of $135,503.57.
Is there support? Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker for approval of claims in the amount of $135,503.57. Is there discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Colton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption of Resolution 24-18, Resolution approving Brownfield TIF Plan for redevelopment project located in the Village of Middleville.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Doster for adoption of Resolution 24-18, a resolution approving the Brownfield TIF Plan for redevelopment project located in the Village of Middleville. I'll lead this off with a few comments. Commissioners, we have had probably close to three hours of discussion on this in a couple of different meetings where we've gone over this in detail. We've heard from the village, we've heard from DDA, we've heard from several people about this from all different perspectives of it. Fortunately or unfortunately, this is the second one of these that has come across your desk. It is probably by far the most complicated one that you're going to see because of the number of entities and local units of government that are involved in this, from the village to the township, to the DDA, to the county. Very complicated. Most of them, like the one we did for Nashville, was somewhat simple. So, I mean, this is a, this is a different animal. So there has been a lot of confusion about how it's paid for, what it is. I appreciate the developers sticking with us through this process. I know being a member of the Brownfield Board, we've been discussing TIFs for years now and it is time for us to come to a conclusion with this today. So as Doug Powers pointed out, they've been working on this for three to four years. As we know, Tiden Lofts right across the street from us is opening and it was full before they opened, that it was completely sold out. So that tells us that there is a need for workforce housing in this county. So when I hear information from Nicole, like the average house in the Middleville District is 380,000, that's astounding to me. We are in the process of selling my dad's house, who's not, hasn't been living there for a couple of years and a starter home now is around 250,000 in rural northwest Ohio. So there is definitely a need for housing. When you look at the inventory available in this county for workforce, when you look at the pricing for housing available, this TIF put through by the state is in response to try to stimulate developers to come to areas like us and create housing to, to help with workforce. So I agree that it's, it's not all that appealing from a standpoint of taxes when you look at how the taxes, because the state of Michigan and the federal government, they don't, well, they do print money, but they take our money and redistribute it as best as they see possible. So in this case, we've been trying to address the housing crisis for years in the county since COVID and this is an opportunity that I'm not sure that these TIFs are going to go on forever, but they're a tool right now that developers are using. And I think it has been pointed out that the developer is around asking for 4.5 million. The request that they're allowed to ask for was two, or 12.5 million, so it's substantially less than what they're doing. And as you know, from looking at the paperwork with the, with the commercial development and the value of this property being in the, in the mid-300s versus being several million going forward, the taxable value of this area and what it means to Middleville and that area, I think is significant. So I go back to the fact that Middleville Village approved this unanimously, the DDA approved it on a split vote. There's an emergency services agreement between the township and the other entities as well that was approved, that they were quick to point out that the paper potential or didn't accurately portray that as a vote in favor of the, of the TIF, but in favor of the services agreement. So it is time for us to make a decision and I am more than happy to have another hour and a half discussion and we can bring up any number of people involved in it. Before we do that, I would like to kind of take a straw poll to see where they're at and if we're in favor of it, you can certainly get your questions answered, but if we're in favor of it or we're not in favor of it, let's make a decision to move forward. So starting, Commissioner Vice Chair Hatfield.
I am.
Turn your ear out with this, please.
I am in favor of it. Growth always comes with positives and negatives, but the bottom line is that if a community is not growing, it's going backwards. Otherwise, how are we going to, you know, pay higher wages, yeah, provide the public services that are needed, yeah, have good schools? Growth is key. And, you know, I think that this project is a great opportunity for the county to continue to grow in what really is a responsible manner. TIF, like so many government programs, is not perfect, but it's what we've been given to work with and I think that we're making the best of it that we can. So I support it.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Before I go to that part of it, I would like to say, I know there was some dissatisfaction with the board as I hear and see lots of things as everybody else does because we decided to postpone this for a month. I just want everybody to understand that myself personally, I have not worked on this project for three or four years. I needed some time. I needed some time to understand this project. So whoever was chastising us at the last meeting should understand that, yes, you've worked on it for four years, but we haven't. We need to become more aware of this and what's going on. So I am in favor of this. It's not a perfect thing and we won't find a perfect thing, but it's a good thing. It's a good thing for our county and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Tunisin?
Like Commissioner Hatfield and Bruce, I've been torn by this from day one too. So, because a lot of it, because we don't understand how this program totally works too. So, but I don't want to be the one to squash the need for housing and, but moving forward, I wish that this board would have a, maybe a seat at the table in the negotiations moving forward on some of these projects.
A little earlier in the process.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Smelker?
I voted no on it before and I will be voting no again. I feel that I'm voting for the majority of my constituents.
Thank you. Commissioner Getty?
First, I want to acknowledge that there is a need for workforce housing in our community, in our county, in our region. I think that this is the wrong tool to be pulling out of the toolbox for this project. I don't feel that is an equitable, an equitable program for the Village of Middleville residents who I hear. My biggest comment from the Village of Middleville residents is that taxes are too high and so I don't feel like they should be paying for all the services for 144 families for the next 14 years. And, and fourth is that, is that this is an expansion of the Brownfield TIF program to include all housing projects. Prior to this, it's my understanding that the tool was available for the redevelopment of Brownfield sites and to incentivize that redevelopment so that it could get back on the tax roll. And I believe that there are at least a couple of projects in Middleville that would meet the requirements of the original Brownfield TIF. And for a small village, that is an excessive burden to place on the Village of Middleville taxpayers and that's what I hear from them on a regular basis.
Thank you. Commissioner Colton?
I was initially against the project in Nashville. A big reason was because I lived across the street from it.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on. I'll, I'll pull it closer, but, so that's, you've heard of NIMBY, Not in My Backyard? Well, this is NIMFI, Not in My Front Yard, because that's where this was. And this is a school that's been closed for decades, what was in front of my house. And it was blighted, broken windows, bats, kids lighting fires inside and, and it was doing nothing. It produced very little taxes for the Village of Nashville, but now I'm seeing this take shape. This is a seven and a half million dollar project. And there was a little destruction before there could be construction, but I see it taking shape now and it's what was blighted, useless spot is now becoming beautiful once again with living people inside of it. And now I see that, you know, it's hard to admit you're wrong, especially to your wife, but in this case.
Remind you.
Yeah. Yeah, I've never been right, by the way. It's taking shape and, okay, so we're not going to have, you know, the real deal taxes that a seven and a half million dollar project would for a while, but it was just vacant before and producing very little taxes. And when that time's over, it will be making some real deal taxes and in the meantime, brings more people and life into the community.
Um, I was in favor of delaying it a month for additional public comment and a more thorough investigation by this board into this topic at this time. I also watched the Village, Middleville Village Commission meetings that discussed this topic. And I listened to the comments today. And in weighing the scales on it, I, I'm in favor of the project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, there's a motion on the floor, adoption of Resolution 24-18, a resolution approving the Brownfield TIF plan for redevelopment. That was a motion by Hatfield. It was supported by Doster for the project located in the Village of Midtown. Is there any additional discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Getty?
No.
Smelker?
No.
Hatfield?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Tunison?
Yes.
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Ann Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption of Resolution 24-19, resolution to approve tax increment revenue sharing agreement and matters related thereto Peren Midvilla Project.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker for adoption of Resolution 24-19, a resolution to approve tax, tax increment revenue sharing agreement and matters related thereto to the Midvilla Project. Discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Tunison? Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
No.
Ann Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Mishta Chill CDBG Grant Agreement and approval of the Authorized Signatory Form and Housing Improvement Program HIP Guidelines.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty for approval of the MSHDA Chill CDBG Grant Agreement and approval of the Authorized Signatory Form and Housing Improvement Program HIP Guidelines. Discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hatfield?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Getty? Smelker?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the CDBG Emergency Homeowner Program and Guidelines.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunison for approval of the CDBG Emergency Homeowner Program Guidelines. Discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster? Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of a letter of understanding between the Berry County Board of Commissioners and the Sheriff of Berry County and the Police Officers Labor, Labor Council for the Deputy Sheriff Unit regarding the starting pay for Deputy Sheriff based on prior experience.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker for approval of a letter of understanding between the Berry County Board of Commissioners and the Sheriff of Berry County and the Police Officers Labor Council for the Deputy Sheriff Unit regarding the starting pay for a Deputy Sheriff based on prior experience. Discussion? David, do you want to give a little explanation to this?
What this does, and this was reviewed by the, uh, Human Services, you know, Committee, Personnel Committee at their last meeting. But we were missing one member, so we could not unanimously recommend approval of this. But the three of us present all concurred and, yeah, are recommending this. It does allow the sheriff to bring someone in at a one-year experience level of compensation rather than the normal starting level, assuming that they have appropriate experience that justifies that. If they, if the sheriff wants to go anything higher than that, as he has occasionally recommended to us in the past, it would have to come to us for approval. So, this gives him flexibility, but flexibility only to go to the one-year experience level.
Yeah, it's my understanding that there is a staffing shortage, so they're trying to bring people in. And this is a tool to just allow him a little more flexibility in starting pay for new hires coming in that do have experience.
And it, it's to our benefit to bring someone in with some level of experience, so we're not having to start out with day one training.
Commissioner Campbell, do you have a question?
I do. I have a comment pertaining to the way we go about through the Personnel and Human Services Committee. I will not be voting in favor of this, not because of the content, but because my townships are not getting representation before this comes before us. I am not in favor of the Personnel and Human Services Committee. As I've said before, I did make a mistake and voted in favor of it when it came about. It was put on, on a time when we're all thinking about replacing our administrator. I was thinking this was going to be a tool. So, it was my blunder for voting in favor of this at all in the first place. But my fathers always taught me that you can make a mistake, but don't follow through with it if you find out it's wrong. And right now, my four townships elect me to be in the ballgame, not sitting on the sideline, waiting for somebody else to have the input on these items. So, I am strongly disinfavorred of this Personnel and Human Services Committee. It was said it was to save time. My time isn't any more worth saving than any other commissioner. They're giving their time to decide this item. I can give my time to decide this item. So, for that fact, I, I, I'm just not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the content. I'm imposed to the direction that we get there in. My townships are not being fully represented, and I'm the one that was elected to represent them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Campbell?
No.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I approve, uh, move to approve of a letter of understanding between the Berry County Board of Commissioners and the Sheriff of Berry County and the Governmental Employees Labor Council, Berry County Corrections Division regarding the starting pay for a corrections officer based on prior experience. This mirrors the prior resolution. Only this regards the collection, uh, the corrections department as opposed to the deputies.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty for approval of a letter, a letter of understanding between the Berry County Board of Commissioners and the Sheriff of Berry County and Governmental Employees Labor Council, Berry County Corrections Division regarding the starting pay for a corrections officer based on prior experience. Additional discussion?
I have one further comment. I'd just like to make the comment that this, this committee was set up to, to save time. I'd like everybody to know that, that these two items held a 15-minute increment in that meeting in the agenda. It was 15 minutes. I think we can spare 15 minutes at our Board of Commissioners meeting to decide items with everybody inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Commissioner Doster?
With, with all respect, I, I do disagree with your position. I think that the, there are times, this just adds another layer of being able to go through this information. We've gone through it as a whole board twice. If you have questions regarding it, you have every opportunity to speak on it and represent your townships. We cannot serve, all of us on every single board that we have. You cannot all sit on mental health. You cannot, I mean, we, we delegate that authority to give a first version of a recommendation all the time. And I, I mean, I'm familiar with this procedure because I was on the board 30 years ago and we had standing committees. And I thought that they worked very well at that time. You, you get the minutes. You're able to contact those individuals. You're able to show to those committees if you wish to. To me, it's, it, it doesn't pose as big a problem, I guess. So, I just wanted to make that there, there are opposing views on this.
Thank you.
May I ask a comment on that, Chairman?
Absolutely.
We obviously agree to disagree here. This is not a regular board that we sat on. This is, this is a representation, a direct representation of the Board of Commissioners. It's another board meeting. It's another ask of the public to show up on another day of the week. And I, I beg and to disagree. I am not being allowed to represent me. I am not supposed to be on the other side of the table asking questions of a board that I'm a member of. I'm supposed to be in the game, not on the sidelines, asking questions. And, and my spot at a meeting would be public comment. That's not the side of table, the table that my constituents elected me to be on. That's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Mr. Check?
Yes, Commissioner Colton?
I think just, just this disagreement is the result of we should either be committee of the whole all the way or go to standing committees. I think both systems work. I've been on both. But what we have now is something in the middle where we have committee of the whole and then what? We have Building and Grounds Committee. We got Personnel Committee. You know, we should, you know, obviously, why are we doing that if committee of the whole works? We should either be all committee of the whole or go to standing committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tunison?
I agree wholeheartedly with that statement right there. Absolutely. So, I'm, I'm in agreement with Bruce on some of this, okay? So, I agree with that wholeheartedly.
Okay.
One or the other.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Campbell?
Nay.
Tunison?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I am particularly honored to move for the adoption of Resolution 24-21 to honor Michael Brown upon his retirement. And I assume you will read the resolution in detail-
Yes.
-for us. But that is, as has been said a number of times here, Michael has performed a great service for this county for 30-plus years. And he, he will be long remembered for the leadership that he provided.
Absolutely.
I think this entire board seconded that.
Okay. I'm going to put Smelker and company. Thank you.
Oh, hey. Dave? Who's that getting that?
Smelker.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody here in the audience, Dave. Michael, if you would join me at the podium, we would like to present this to you.
This is a day that none of us wanted to see happen. So, I think everybody that's had a conversation has tried to talk you out of retirement, including kidnapping, other, other threats. But they have not been successful. But we certainly are just blessed to have you in our lives for 30 years, the great things you've done for the county. I mean, when I think about talking to Sandy James and Rod Goble that were on the board 30 years ago when they hired you, they both made comments about we hired this kid out of Michigan State and never having had a county administrator for the county before. And they believed in you. And man, what a great job it has been. And I imagine for you, it's got to be, I'm almost emotional talking about it, thinking about 30 years of your life, you know, here, going through this organization and seeing the growth, seeing people come and go, seeing all the blessings, but seeing what you've created. It's got to be such a sense of pride for you and your family and everybody around you to know that this little county, double A rated, great finances, just all the things that you've done that, I don't know that we'll ever be able to repay you, but someday there'll be a statue or a monument of Michael Brown.
Those are for dead, those are for dead people. Live a lot longer.
Live a little, live a little longer. But, um, and as I've read, 40 different commissioners over those 30 years that you've mentored and been with, you certainly were a mentor to me, coming in green with just business experience, knowing nothing about county government. And when we've disagreed on objects, I've quickly figured out that you were right. But thanks for the mentorship. Thanks for the friendship. It's just been an amazing journey in my nine or 10 years of doing this that I don't think we could have done it without you, that you've always been our resource for us there. When, when something is a little gray, we snap our heads around and go, "Michael, give us, give us the answer to the question." So, we know there's a lot of, a lot of things that you've done for the county that go unnoticed behind the scenes. I appreciate, like you said, the mentorship and the conversations behind the scenes going forward. But I could go on, but let me read this for you. "A resolution to honor Michael C. Brown, Berry County Administrator, upon his retirement. Whereas Michael Brown was hired in January of 1995 as the first county administrator for Berry County at a time when the county was facing budget challenges. And whereas Michael applied conservative and sound budgeting principles to developing the county budget throughout his tenure as a county administrator, earning the county an AA bond rating through standard and pores for many consecutive years. And whereas, over the years, Michael worked for over 40 county commissioners, providing information, guidance, support, and was always ready to listen and offer wise counsel to, wise counsel to commissioners, elected officials, department head, staff, and the public alike. And whereas, Michael Brown shared and improved his leadership skills by serving in various positions on the Michigan Association of Counties Administrative Officers Board, including president, serving on the Municipal Employees Retirement Systems Board for over 16 years, including serving as board chair for over 11 years, serving on the Berry County United Way Board at Executive Committee for 13 years, including serving as a position of vice president and president, and serving on the Finance and Audit Committee for 10 years." You've been busy, you know? Whereas, in addition to his skills in financial management, organization, and communication, Michael is a person of good character, exhibiting integrity, reliability, perseverance, patience, and kindness. Michael Brown has provided 30 years of dedicated service to the county of Berry and will be greatly missed by his colleagues and staff. Be it therefore resolved, the Berry County Board of Commissioners extend its deepest gratitude for Michael Brown for his invaluable service to Berry County. And be it further resolved, that the Berry County Board of Commissioners wishes Michael continued success and many years of health and enjoyment for his family, friends, and favorite pastimes. Thank you.
It is a little more emotional than I thought. For those that have been around me and worked with me, I'm not a terribly emotional individual. Try to be pretty even keeled and, but I have to say, this is, it is a little more emotional. Just a moment out, thank you, everyone. I, I have to say, and I was commenting to Jack Minor, who's become a, a, a good friend over the years and support. And I think the most, I just feel grateful if, if that's maybe the appropriate term. I've been supported over my career. I, I, I've always felt that the community, the commissioners, the agencies and departments that I work with have, have just supported me. I've been fortunate, I apologize, cross my hands, my, I've been fortunate that I had the privilege to start a career. You know, I, I've commented before, you, in this business, you get an education. You hope that what you've chosen to do, you like. I was fortunate. I then found a community, a county to work for. Then you start to look and say- I then found a community, a county to work for, then you start to look and say, "Is that where you really want to stay? Is that the culture that you want to be part of?" And again, I was fortunate that that was, this is the place I wanted to be. And then you have a family, and that becomes home, or you start to say, "Where do I want home to be?" And I was fortunate that this is where I wanted home to be. I've raised two children, both have recently graduated from college, are now moving out on their own. So I just, I guess I can't say more than I feel privileged that this is home, this is community. Eric, welcome. I'm glad the board has found a replacement, that they have confidence in, that they had unanimity in. This is, and I greatly appreciate over the years, the collegiality, and I think that was capped off today by the conversations that you all had regarding committees, the ability to, in a, more than a civil way, a collegial way, have that dialogue and discourse about how you are gonna dispense the government, the county's business. I greatly appreciate that and have had that over my career. So please, don't take that lightly. That's a hard thing to maintain and only you guys can do that. But it goes a long way. So there isn't a greater place, in my opinion, than right here, this boardroom is. And I apologize. And I need to acknowledge, before I get too emotional, some folks that have been my rocks. My Deputy Administrator, Luella DeSantis. Anything that is here and anything that, any quality that you can imagine of me, that's a positive quality, of course. You know, that is doubled with Luella. Please understand that, and Eric, there is nobody better than she is. I've been fortunate to have her most of my career. I owe, just a wealth to her. She's always been there to counsel and guide. She has a servant's mindset that you won't find anywhere else. I think that, you know, as our prosecutor talked about FOIA and the work that's done and help, that is Luella. I mean, she is, and make sure that the organization runs and runs the way it's supposed to, and you'll never see her in the limelight. So I just owe countless gratitude to her. So thank you very much for everything that you've done and your professional friendship over all the years. I will miss, greatly miss that.
Thank you for being easy to work for.
Another one that I owe a ton to is Pam Jarvis. Pam was the probate register, thank you. Got to know Pam in the court system as probate register. She then took on the county clerk position. She retired from county clerk and was fortunate enough after some encouragement to come back. And she just knows, I don't know that there's anybody that knows more about, if you may, the history of the county, and particularly when it comes to the technical details than Pam. Again, I just feel blessed to have Pam in my office and have worked with her and known her for my career. So I thank you very much. One other person that I need to acknowledge, and that's Barb Rhodes, and I think Barb is, I wish she'd have come up. Barb is, that's Barb. She's one of our newest employees. She is our payroll and benefits specialist, and Barb is the newest addition to the staff. I am glad to have been able to hire her. She brings to the table a wealth of knowledge in the payroll and benefits. I haven't had the privilege of working with her quite as long, but Eric, you are in really good hands, again, and I envy you for the folks that you get to work with. I am just greatly appreciative. So with that, I could, there are just so many countless thank yous that I have, I could go on and wouldn't know where to stop. But again, I think that my thank you to everybody in the community, the commissioners, and particularly the elected officials and department heads that I've worked with, is that I've always felt supportive and I'm in awe of the things that you do. I'm the business person, if you may, and I felt privileged that I found what I, my calling, and that's to make sure that those folks that are passionate, is Liz still here? Liz Lenz? Liz is one of those, right? Just, she is passionate, she's cause-driven. She does what she does because she believes in it. And it's been a privilege to help those folks be able to do what they do and do it well. And you have a county of leaders that really do, and are experts in what they do. So thank you very much. I will, Eric, you will not see me at the board meetings. It will be interesting Tuesday, next Tuesday.
For all of us.
My car comes this way and not that way. But it is the best place in the world as far as I'm concerned, and I'm privileged to have had the opportunity to have the seat for a little while. Thank you.
We have to allow some time for Commissioner comments. Commissioner Tunison.
Just a roast?
Yeah, this is a roast now.
I need you.
I made a note on that.
So when I became Commissioner, which was almost going on almost two years, you know, I don't know anything about this place. I walk into his office, we're talking, and I said, "What do I do?" He goes, "Just be you." And I said, "Well, that's probably not a good thing." And, but I've enjoyed every conversation we've had. You've been there for me, to guide me. You've taught me a lot about what it is to be, I think, a good steward of the county. And why am I here? Because you want to do better for everybody, okay? And you've helped me understand that. So I want to thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay?
Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks for taking my speech, Bob. I've been here close to four years now. I got this job. Thing that sticks out in my mind is Karen was here and was filling out the paperwork, and there's a spot in there for, filling in for your supervisor. So when I brought my papers into her, I said, "Who's my supervisor? I don't know what to put in here." And she says, "You have no supervisor." And it was then I realized what a huge task I had been given. And when I come out of Karen's office, Michael was sitting there. That's me. He sat down, talked to me for probably a half hour. Basically said the same thing Bob did, "I have no clue what I'm doing." And he said, "Don't worry about it." He said, "It's gonna take you at least to summer, till summer to start getting a grasp on this." And then he says, "I don't mean this summer. I mean next." And he was absolutely right. So thankful for people that's had so much experience in this stuff. And most importantly, to Michael for, I don't know where I'd been, he just always says, "That guy." And I'm sure Mr. Zuzga, Eric, will do a fine job, but well, it's gonna be hell without you.
Thank you.
It's gonna be tough. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatfield.
Well, I am probably one of the newer residents in this area, having only been here twenty-five years compared to most of you who have been here a lifetime. But I can, yeah, Michael was one of the first people that I met when I came here, and we had the benefit of being able to get to know each other, sitting around a baseball diamond as much as we did sitting on opposite sides of the desk. So it was a great way to, yeah, get to know Michael personally as well as professionally. But, yeah, Michael chose a profession that is not an easy one. You're called upon to be a leader without really having the crown on your head, that bestows that title on you. So you end up having to work behind the scenes and make all of us that sit here now and that have sat here over the last thirty years look like we really are smart. But we're smart because you're smarter. And, you know, the guidance that you have provided me, and I think everyone else that has ever sat here, is certainly greatly appreciated and highly respected, and we wish you well in your next career.
Thank you.
Commissioner Doster. Well, I'm maybe the only one that remembers before you were even here. Judith Peterson was the administrator prior, and, but I've paid attention all this time. So I've watched your career for the entire thirty years, and I have never known you to lose your cool, which is saying something in this position. Not only have you been extraordinarily competent in holding this job, but I think that you've set a really fine example of being a decent human being. Thank you. Commissioner Colton.
Especially the first time I was here, Michael. You get elected, you come in as this political animal with all these issues, maybe some extreme issues, you get elected. But then I got here and you have, that's the dichotomy of this job, first this political part, but then the actual part of helping to run this county for the people of the county. And when I would get wanged out on some political issue, you were very centering and brought it back to the middle. And to tell you the truth, I really don't know what your politics are after all these years. And that is actually a tribute. That's the way it should be. You always centered it to the focus of running this county and for the benefit of the people of this county, and really left all the politics out of it. So I think I am definitely a better county commissioner now because of you. And thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Getty.
Boy, the further down they've used all my material.
I'll trade you, you can come stand here, right?
No, thank you. You've just provided an exceptional example for me. I got to know you first as a volunteer on our parks board, and then in various roles with other boards that we've served on together. And then, you know, as Commissioner. Where I think sometimes I'm gonna have a short question for you, the depth that you provided to every, and maybe some of them were stupid questions, right? But you always, you always provided just great counsel. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And our senior member of the board. I don't know how many years you've been here, John, but you've had the longest tenure with Michael.
I'm going on twelve years. Thought I knew everything when I got elected. Michael soon provided the information that I didn't know at this point. I've had numerous meetings with the man in his office in that much, and he has talked me down off the ceiling so many times. And I consider him a friend and a confidant. Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Again, we could continue to go on, but it's been an awesome, my nine or ten years here have just been blessed with your mentorship and your friendship. So you will not be forgotten. Hopefully, we will still be able to see you post tense afterwards, different scenarios, different conversations. And on behalf of this board, we certainly wish you well in your new career in retiring for a minute to go back to work on Monday. But we wouldn't expect anything else from me because that's been your life. You've been a dedicated servant, just an amazing mentor and friend. So thank you very much. Commissioners, it's a difficult vote, but Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbough.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Luella, she didn't hear me. I was gonna see if Luella wanted to say anything, but I think she escaped. And that may be her preference anyways, is to escape that, so. Oh, unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators' final report.
I have to give one more time, thank you.
Okay.
I just, thank you very much. It's real honor and a privilege.
New county administrator, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you to everyone, it's been very welcoming. Michael's been a great resource, and I'm gonna pick his brain for the rest of the week. So thank you all, and the staff's been great, but I will not be here for thirty years. So I can't do that. I don't want to retire at eighty, so.
All right. Thank you. Chairperson's report. I am all set. Vice chairperson's report.
I'm all set.
Commissioner's report. Commissioner Tunison.
I've attended Carlton Township, Hastings Township, and Rutland. Of course, obviously, the topic at Rutland is about the new Myers. The township and the city will be going into negotiations. I think they had a meeting yesterday regarding the water in the sewer going forward. A lot of people say it's got something to do with the county. This has nothing to do with the county, it's got to do with the township of Rutland and the city of Hastings. So we'll see if they can get, work this out. That is the dealmaker, whether or not they can get water and sewer out there. Township's concerned about their residents with their property taxes, the seventy-seven businesses down through there, virtually almost tripling, and so that's something they're gonna have to come to the middle on someplace. So we'll see if they can get this done.
Okay. And the timeline on that is not next week, it's out there a few years.
It's out there. It's not, it's not like this is gonna happen within the next six months. This is a timeline at the earliest next spring, I'm assuming.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I'm very pleased that Commissioner Tunison got that one. I visited Community Action last night, and then tomorrow night I'll be at DHS in Thorn Apple, so that's all I have.
Vice chair, Hatfield.
I was in Grand Rapids yesterday for the Workforce Development Board. We had planning commission last night, and we're starting work on the Consumers Energy application now. The handout that we got weighed approximately five pounds, so there's work to be done. Otherwise, economic development tomorrow. Otherwise, economic development tomorrow.
Commissioner Smelker.
Attended Berry County Transit yesterday morning, and yesterday afternoon was 911. And we have ordered the new MDCs, the mobile data computers that's in the police cars and stuff. We have ordered them in about two or three weeks before they can get.
They made a decision on radios yet, or is that a ways out yet with the new encryption technology being required?
These have the new encryption technology with them. So, we will be a step ahead of that when the state says it's mandatory.
Thank you. Commissioner Getty.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Colton.
Nothing.
Commissioner Doster.
Nothing further.
Okay. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Hello. Larry, I'm from Del. We had a little bit of a hiccup in our Berry Township voting. And there was some things due. It started exploding and getting bigger than it really was. But I wanted to give some accolades to Sarah. She probably wasn't too appreciative, but I kept pointing people to come talk to her about it. And doggone it, she didn't smooth everything out and give the people the answers and the comfort that they needed. So, we got a good one coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Additional public comment?
Stephen Pitch, I might be out of line talking when I'm in uniform, but Michael, all the years, I'm in my 14th year up here, and all the conversations we've had, I've never known that you're a fellow Spartan, so go green.
Class act, Michael. You raised the bar for everyone. Thanks. I'd like to say thanks to Commissioner Smelker, Commissioner Getty. The two people in the township that is most affected actually encapsulates the Mid-Villa project. You guys knocked on doors. You went to the local meetings. You found out what the public wanted. All those in favor, barring one here today, were on the village council or associated with the business. I don't know how you guys are going to answer the people who are the teachers, who are the construction workers, the people that work at the manufacturing plants, who have been there for years, paying their rents, paying their housing, paying their property taxes. Now, you are the two that represented them and have to explain why the board voted to provide money. And it was said, subsidize housing. I've never alleged subsidized housing. It's subsidized development. So, I will stand by you guys if you need someone to back you up for the way you voted, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Ted DeRees, Prairieville Township. Michael, I wanted to say thank you for answering all my emails. Just a couple of things. One, I'm glad Prairieville Township has its own planning commission and zoning enforcement officer, after watching the last few meetings, which I usually do online. Yeah, it's not an easy thing. The other thing is, I'm going to be curious to hear the Drain Commission 101 educational session you guys are going to go to. As you know, Prairieville Township and Berry Township, you know, got stuck with over $800,000 worth of assessments, which really do equate to about a million, you know, once we pay our $60,000 every year for 20 years. And as people that, you know, work with budgets, you know, that really, you know, puts a crimp into our ability to help our residents. So, just so you know, I think I did send out some emails so you kind of get a rough idea of what what we're going through in those two townships. I've had discussions with both Berry Township regarding if there's any way that some of that money can be, not actually given back, but the amount of money that residents of those townships in that Watson Drain District and the two townships can be, you know, dropped would certainly help things out. Another thing I did, I look back at the at the elections, and it's pretty amazing here in in Berry County that in an election in August, that's so important because most things are determined, you know, who wins, you know, who represents, that we barely get a third of the registered voters out. And I went back and looked all the way back to 2010, and it's consistent. And it'll be amazing because then, once the general election hits in November, we're close to 70 to 80 percent. People like to come out for the general election. And I'm an advocate for the early voting. If you're not interested, if you want to see your vote tabulated and you get an absentee ballot, bring your absentee ballot in during early voting and cast it. You can actually, you know, see the vote go through. If there's any issues on that ballot, you'll find out then. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Additional public comment?
David Lotzner again. Want to thank the board for moving ahead with this Mid-Ville project. It will be a, I think it's a proper thing to do. Everything has been done as it should. As a firm believer in property rights of ownership, I think, given this developer has done and met all the requirements and obligations, he should not be stopped merely because somebody doesn't like the project. There will be, I think it will work out. I'm confident of that. So, thank you. Mike Brown, thank you. Congratulations. Have a good retirement, or semi-retirement, whichever mode you go into. I appreciate the the semi-retirement mode. That's where I am. I want to say too, I deeply appreciate the open debate that I heard here today. Commissioner Campa, I appreciate your strong position in hanging on to those responsibilities of the commissioner rather than pushing them off into other committees or other organizations. I think that tendency is what has gone wrong in our government. You are the people that have been elected. You represent us, and you should be firsthand in contact with those decisions in that planning. So, thank you for taking that stand. Appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Commissioner comments. Commissioner Doster.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Colton? Commissioner Getty?
I I always feel honored to serve with all of you. I I feel exceptionally honored when we can disagree on something and do it in such a professional way. I feel the same about my service in the village and both townships. We live in a special place, and I want to continue to have open dialogue and be able to to discuss different topics and then move on to the next thing because I guarantee that we agree on way more than we disagree. So, thank you to everyone.
Excellent. Commissioner Smelker.
As of today, I've lived in this county in the same house for 75 years. So, that kind of shows that I don't care for change.
Commissioner Tunison.
Well, I want to welcome Eric. As much as I'm going to miss Michael, there's going to be a lot of new things coming here at the county this coming year, new officials. And Michael has assured, I think all of us have asked the same question, did we make the right decision? I think he has assured us all that we have. So, I want to welcome Eric and can't wait to sit down and have conversations with you. So, thank you.
Commissioner Campo.
Agree totally on that, Eric, on Bob's comments over here. Looking forward to it. I think we've made a very excellent choice. I would like to reiterate what Commissioner Getty spoke. We will always have disagreements and different points of views. That's why we're here. But it never it never should be interpreted as a reflection of how we feel about these board members. I'm so honored beyond talk to be sitting up here with these gentlemen and women and be a part of this county operation, something I never ever would have dreamed I'd be here. And it is a total honor to be here.
Your time's up.
Vice Chair Hatfield.
What can I say? But I agree. Yeah, I I find this a a wonderful group to be a part of and, you know, work together. And I don't think oftentimes the variety of opinions, the disagreements that we have are always visible to others, yet they do take place and we do resolve them. And we come back to the table and hopefully make better decisions because of those discussions that have taken place. And all I can say is I wish there were some other organizations in the community that could work as openly.
Absolutely. Thank you. One more note. Right at 11 o'clock, right now.
Timing's perfect.
There is a reception for, one said, Michael Brown across the street at the Titan Center. So, there will be some cookies and cakes and snacks. So, if you would like to say hi to Michael and congratulate him, it's a long walk all the way across the road to the Titan Center. But we will be there from 11 to 2 o'clock. I agree with all those statements. Very happy with how the election went. This is the first group that's got four-year terms in the history of the state for county commissioners. So, we will have not only the past two years, but four years to work together, continue to disagree and agree and move the county forward with the help of Eric and the spirit of Michael and Luella and the staff who have guided this ship mightily for the last 30 years. So, again, Michael, congratulations on your retirement. We appreciate you. God bless you and your way forward. So, thank you. We are adjourned.